Come to order. Let the record show. That we're all here.
Nice for a change.
We are all here for a change.
Welcome.
Let's do roll call.
Jennifer Arson.
Andrea Benjamin.
Tom Ross. Recurring items. Discussion, possible action regarding an update from home financing.
We'll first need to approve the minutes.
You have approval of minutes? You've sent me something to help you with this. The minutes from our last meeting have been distributed. Any correction, any notes? Motion to approve.
Second.
Or I move to approve the minutes.
My second.
The minutes stand approved.
Are those in favor?
All those in favor. Now the minutes are approved. Now we're going to number two.
Okay. It is short and sweet. I gave you guys a list of lenders we added in 2025. It's, I think, a pretty good list. We've got two that are in the process of being added. Both of them last week and they executed the lender agreement and they're in the process of getting signed up with E housing and doing all they need to do. But we're continuing to grow. The position is getting less and less part-time and is still part-time. But lots of lender activity out there. And I want to cover a little bit of this document, which might make more sense to Tom than anybody. And I'll try and tell you what each of the things are that I've got highlighted. Some of them are pretty simple. Want to remind everybody before we go over this, in June, we lowered the credit score from 660 to 640 on FHA, which was, I think, the right thing to do and we'll see how much impact that had on delinquencies. The first highlighted deal is our loan to value on conventionals. We're averaging 89% LTV. And our peers are at 93, so we have a little more equity in our conventional deals. And our governments, because FHA is at 96.5, that we sit right where everybody does. As I'm sure Tom can attest to, most FHA ones don't have larger than the minimum down payment with some exceptions.
Yeah.
The next highlighted piece down that center column is our volume. You can ignore the state because it's all obviously in Oklahoma. But in the last rolling 12-month period, we've done 34 conventional loans, 108 FHA loans, seven VA loans for a total of 149 loans. Our rolling 12-month average, that lower left-hand highlight, we continue to exceed 30 million in volume. We're at that 149 transactions for 32 million, 723,049. If you flip up and look at the second page, we have no delinquencies still, even with the 640. Your program is doing very, very, very well. I'm getting more calls from lenders that want to add the program. Mark did tell us before the meeting who the top five lenders were from the OHFA program. Some of them are on our list, some of them aren't. So I'm going to go start knocking on the doors and saying, why are you doing their programs and ours? And see if we can get them to do some more of ours, although several of these lenders are active on our program. You didn't hear it from me. And at that point, I would tell you guys that I'll open it up to questions. But it's been pretty easy to go out and sell the program, knock on realtor's doors, knock on lenders' doors. And Jennifer, you and I talked about this when we met last week to kind of get you up to speed. But when you go from under a million to 34 million, there's always some growing pains in that. But the growing pains have been really pretty limited. And we've internalized some of the approval stuff. Mark's team used to do the lender approval paperwork and she retired, did a great job. I got to pick that one up too. I think we're doing okay, although I did have one lender today, struggled a little bit with getting up to speed on E housing. And we'll talk about that with E housing to make sure they're not missing out on emails. But getting more and more activity, it's always pleasing to see the program recognized for two things. A very low interest rate and it's the only program that I'm aware of that is a true gift from the day of closing.
Do we offer any benefits for lenders or anybody to select conventional over FHA since FHA to mortgage insurance never drops off?
We don't, and that may be something that we want to talk about. The biggest drawback and something I want to work on with US, and we haven't had it really in the volume until 24 and 25, to ask for very much from US Bank, when you're doing five or six transactions, you can't ask for very many favors. At 150, I think we can. But I want to see if we can expand the conventional program to get it off the HFA advantage that we talked about when we had coffee. So that two things can happen. Number one, it won't be restricted to 80% of very immediate income. And number two, I think there'll be a wider appeal for folks because most of the conventional deals we've done, a handful have been the HFA advantage, like, oh, I have to meet that guideline. But some of them are just going after the low rate. And there's a way for them to meet the guideline on the income by typically stating only one of the borrower's incomes are base versus bonus, like we talked about, things like that. But if we could get off that HFA advantage, I think it would open up the program significantly.
David, one of the reasons why we're at 80% or less of immediate income is because Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac for their HFA program loans, we're offering a carrot and stick. The carrot was maybe an extra 50 basis points if you made one of those loans if it were below 80. The stick was if it were above 80, you had to pay a 2% loan level price just now. So that's quite simple. They dropped to 2%.
That's why I want to go knock on the door. I mean, the 50 basis points we could live without, but 2, we did.
That makes all the difference in a moment. People are now going back to offering above 80.
So we'll get together and see if that's something we can do for 2026 for sure. It's definitely high on my priority list. Other questions?
Can you explain pull-through? Our pull-through is 100%.
That's really good. I will. So what pull-through means is when you lock a loan, you're telling E housing, which is telling US Bank, hey, Tom just got a deal for 123 Main Street. It's got to come your way. It's not a loan until it's closed and on the books and in the pool. So things can happen on pull-through. Properties can't appraise, buyers have qualification problems, sellers have title problems. Things occur that you know well as a realtor, you know well as a lender, that are sometimes beyond anyone's control. But typically, if you maintain a pull-through of 80% or higher, you get the best pricing from your servicers. And if you all can look, I think it's on the last top of the second page, our pull-through rate has never been below 90%. It's been at 100% for six or seven months in a row. And what that means is every deal the lenders are locking are being delivered and put into a pool. So they're high-quality transactions.
US Bank loves it.
Absolutely.
We love it too.
There's, we operate on what's called a best efforts, which means that it's not a mandatory delivery. It doesn't have to go into a pool. It doesn't have to close. But obviously, the more that do close and do go in the pools, the higher value we have to the master servicer. And we've never had an issue in a long time with delinquency. And I don't think we've had an issue probably in five years with pull-through. I mean, when you only have five or six deals going through and you lose one, that kills your pull-through. But we're back to 100 on pull-through and I'm pretty happy with that.
One more for me. Seven VA deals. Is that people chasing rate? Why do you think we have seven VA deals?
Well, we talked about a few months ago, raising the compensation of lenders on VAs to make up for the non-allowables that lenders can't charge. And I think lenders are staying away from the program because they don't understand that well. And that's something I need to go out and do a better job, I believe, on letting lenders know, hey, you get an extra 50 basis points to make up for the non-allowables. I mean, I'm guessing that's what it is. I really don't know, but that would be my best guess.
VA being 100% loan, do you think that's part of it?
Well, that's the only way you would go is if you were chasing rate. But the lender doesn't want to do it. The part of the lender problem is that they're not getting paid enough. Then you've got to take a hit because of the non-allowables.
Right. And we can't, we have no control of the non-allowables that's set by VA. And we talked about, you know, do we raise lender compensation, which would force us to raise the rate? Do we raise lender compensation, leave the rate alone? What do we do? And, you know, Tom made a suggestion, let's just try and raise lender compensation and leave the rate alone. And when we get to my next agenda item, we'll talk about, set some of that in more detail. But I think giving an extra 50 bits probably makes up for most, if not all, of the non-allowables.
I agree.
And David, you mentioned earlier that this is only for local.
That I'm aware of, yes.
I agree. Eighty or local HFA, 3% is prepaying each deal. When you all changed that to a gift, a gift from a second 0% due-on-sale second mortgage, partially forgivable. When you did that, I'm not sure US Bank ever caught up, found out about that. They generally want that too because it stops the loan prepaying so quickly. So keep in mind that either they, and go, well, it doesn't matter because we have slow prepaid anyway in Palm County, but.
We've talked about that and they're, because of the prepay rate, that they're okay.
Oh, because they actually do know.
So far. It's on their radar.
Got it. No, you're not already going to tell them about it.
Yeah, no.
They're going to bring up the point, what you decide to switch back or decrease your contribution or put back on a second mortgage to get a return for the money you're contributing.
Yeah.
There may be other reasons why US Bank likes that as well.
And what he's referencing, Andrea, is if there's a prepayment penalty, you know, as an example, many, many years ago, I made a state housing loan to my daughter and son-in-law. And a year later, he got a job offer in Tulsa. They had to sell the house and they had to pay back 80% of the down payment. So that's a little bit of, hey, I'm not going to refinance or I'm not going to sell because I've got to pay that back. Whereas with a gift, no reason to not sell or not refinance. And that's what Mark.
Slows down the prepayments and therefore that's for the servicer because they can buy the income on that.
Our prepayments on Oklahoma deals have been well over the national average for a long time, which is a good thing. Well, and our delinquency helps a lot in the pricing too. We're in their top tier pricing right now. No one gets, I mean, the state agency is going to get better pricing because they have more volume than we do. But in terms of local agencies, I think we're in their very top tier. Anything else?
Moving to three. Apartmental items.
So item number three, and it's not anything that has to be done today. And Mark and I can work up a pro forma, but one of the things the authority decided to do several years ago was to put in 3% on every deal that we're doing. And Cleveland County and Canadian County, some of the other county programs, they go in and they get a tranche of money. There's something called negative arbitrage because you've got to fund that until they're turned into loans. But they have a fixed rate for the entirety of their program until they run out of money. We've been operating on a best efforts program where we just let the market set the rate. But you all have been putting 3% basically in every deal we do. And obviously, there's not an endless amount of money. So one of the things I think the authority should think about doing, now that we've become more of a habit to lenders and we've gone, you know, I think in 150 deals, that's a whole lot different than less than a dozen. And lenders are more familiar to them, is slowly starting backing off of that compensation. And in general, let's say you went to 250 basis points versus 300, that might raise the rate an eighth. Would you agree with that, Tom?
Yeah.
A half a point? So you might think about, and again, we can get a pro forma. But I think if we slowly back off of that over an extended period, maybe an eighth every quarter or an eighth every six months, it's not going to have any impact on how many loans you originate. It'll allow us to continue to originate and not run out of the authority's money as quickly as we otherwise would.
I agree with all that. I've been going the wrong way. They got more worried about your cash file than he is. But essentially, should we be backing off some or should we all be backing off some? Also, the other thing you do would be put back in a second mortgage. You're getting, you're putting money in, but you're getting something back right now when you've got rid of the second mortgage, made it a grant. You never get 100% back, which is a contribution, which is great if you're putting people in houses. And obviously, affordability is sustainable, right? They're staying in the thousands and not a pint. But yeah, I would think that's probably approved use now. But your program is so attractive, it seems like you can back off the contribution and still continue to originate well.
So again, nothing you necessarily need to do today and we can get you a pro forma if you'd like to see one. I just think from a business standpoint, it makes sense to look at options to see. And if you decide, hey, we want to leave it alone, that's entirely something the trust can do. But it would make sense to me to not all at once, take the 300 basis points off. But over time, again, I think 50 basis points is typically an eighth in rate. And, you know, if it's five and three eighths versus five and a half, that's probably not going to stop very many deals from happening. Is that a fair statement?
I agree with that. I think we can, we cannot lose a ton of market share if we do that. I think we do lose some market share if we make it repayable. Like if we make it the second agenda.
Right.
But I've seen that's another tool, a toolbox in my life, why we implement it.
Will the pro forma tell us how much runway we have? Like right now, if we just kept doing what we're doing?
We can do that.
It's your trustee. Can you give me those numbers?
I'll get.
We don't have a vision on.
I'll need to get that.
Your trustee holds your unsecured cash.
Yeah, I'll get that from Bank of Oklahoma. And then we can figure out, hey, at 150 deals a year, whatever the number is, this is where we are and that's how much longer you can continue to do this. That shouldn't be difficult at all.
And then how quickly is it if we make the decision to drop 50, right? So now we're going to contribute 250 bits of basis points to every deal. Is that just like a, what the switch happens tomorrow?
Yeah, it doesn't require any notice to the lenders. We'll just, the pricing is all set. Every day, US Bank gives their pricing to Mark's team. Mark's team sets the rate. We could flip that switch in a day or two's time.
Okay. Any questions?
No, I think it's all in fine.
I mean, Jennifer, you sell houses for a living. An eighth is going to make a little bit more in payment, but I don't think it's going to, it's not going to stop a deal. And our rates are already deeper than most of the other rates out there because of the 300 basis points.
Yeah, so instead of being three-quarters a point better, you're, you know.
It might have been plans.
Yeah.
Conventional, that's, I think, a greater concern for me is FHA, if they are staying in their homes and they're not delinquent, they'll never have that mortgage insurance drop off. And that could very well be, you know, 1,200 to $2,000 a year. Instead of having that drop off with being a conventional, I think would be more beneficial to those consumers.
I will definitely get to that.
I kind of noticed it on the front page of this thing. Our credits were 724 compared to the peers' 699. So they're actually pretty high-credit score, which is a lot worse than 100.
So.
And, you know, if we went to conventional, it all by itself, by going off the HFA program, might bump up the rate an eighth. So it could be an eighth on a program change and an eighth on less incentive. But again, that's only a quarter and that's still not going to break the deal.
Makes this unconventional into 150 or, you know, something on FHA where like would incentivize them to go conventional. Just, I'm just thinking about the long-term for the consumer that that might be.
Yeah, AMI drops off once it gets to 80% LTV.
Seventy years. But they could, you know.
But it never drops off on a good.
Never. And they changed that in, I think, 2012 or 13, where it just stays on for the life of the loan for all of the years. So it's huge.
Yeah.
Sorry?
I was going to say that our H and B bond conferences, Freddie and Danny usually show up there. They have H and B staff who deal with these kind of programs, which they don't like H and B around the country. And they always bring that up.
Yeah.
They're trying to say, they'd like to see more. But I will say that when, since these programs started in the late 1970s, FHA has always been the workhorse just because that was an affordable product to begin with.
You really could get a 3.5% down, but there are, you know, banks now that do offer that.
It's a good, good point. I believe lenders should be aware of that.
I will absolutely look into that and let you. Any other questions or ideas on? I mean, again, we'll get you the pro forma, maybe the next meeting, you guys can decide if that's something you want to do or not do. And if you do want to do it, how quickly you want to put those cuts in.
Yeah, get the pro forma.
Okay. We will.
I'm moving to four. Jared.
It's me.
This is you.
All right. So this is something David and I have talked about. We actually got a request from a multifamily developer relatively new to the area. But they have implemented a nonprofit structure. And in other states, the nonprofits are exempt from ad valorem tax as well as, you know, typically you could apply just for a sales tax exemption. In Oklahoma, that's not the way that ours works. So governmental entities are generally exempt from sales tax. So like the county by itself is constitutionally exempt from sales tax, okay? Any entity that's created by the county doesn't automatically get the benefit of that through like exemption. And so there's an application that we have to make to tax commission to be able to do that. But the idea would be that, you know, we're helping some of these nonprofit developers. We enter into a development agreement. We kind of, similar to what we've done with the ARPA program and rental assistance, is we kind of act as the governmental institution that money flows through. And we, you know, essentially become a backseat co-developer for, for those kind of very limited purposes of procuring materials. The reason why we're getting asked this question is because affordable units in Oklahoma City now are going, our new construction at least, is starting at $230,000 a month. And when you're, when you, and a lot of that is not soft cost. A lot of that is, you know, actual brick mortar materials. And that sales tax and ad valorem exemption could be the difference between it penciling out through underwriting with Freddie Mac or not. And so this is, this is a request, you know, specifically from two different developers. If the authority would entertain such an idea to at least explore that opportunity, apply for an exemption letter. And if we get an exemption letter, would allow us to kind of negotiate some of those development agreements in, you know, in the future.
Why wouldn't we do that?
We just wanted your direction.
Is it a ton more?
There's a lot of work.
There will be a little extra work we would, and they have all, at least the two that we visited with, we understand it's going to be extra work. We understand there will be invoices and, you know, we would be willing to pay, you know, an annual fee of some amount, you know, kind of through the construction process or a flat fee, you know, out of equity contributions upfront. I mean, we're talking about, if we could provide that service for 10, 15, $20,000 over the life of the construction of a 200-unit project, that might save that developer four or $5 million in sales taxes. And so it seems very intuitive to me, but there is a process we've got to go through. We wanted to get your blessing to be able to do that.
Yeah, they're basically saving 8.65 on everything they buy for the project. Well, most everything.
What constitutes them as affordable housing? Are they like under section 42 or they didn't have tax credit?
Yeah, so they could be straight nonprofits. They could be affordable tax credit developers. They could be, you know, they could be doing tax credit bonds through OHFA. There's kind of a number of, if they're HUD restricting, you know, just on rents, then they qualify, you know, kind of under the statute as well. But the primary purpose being that they have to serve at 60% of AMI or less to qualify as an affordable developer for the tax exemption purposes. That's for the ad valorem side. I would suggest we mirror that for the sales tax side.
And so what would be the process for these entities to come to us? Would we have to decide on each one? Would it be sort of like, if you meet these two requirements, we say yes to you every time?
That's exactly what we would propose, is we would develop, you know, some sort of standard, like, hey, if you meet the test for the ad valorem exemption, you're developing, you know, within the four corners of Oklahoma County, you would be eligible for this program. This is a service we would be willing to provide.
And then we would charge some sort of administrative? And then would that go towards salaries for the people doing the work or could it go, how would that?
So it probably could offset a little bit of my time. And then it could go back into, you know, the general fund of the authority to do whatever you please.
Say 45 million, I think that's a pretty valuable.
I agree completely.
Yeah.
We've not talked like specific rates. I just keep that out. But, I mean, everybody is, anything, anytime they're not having to pay a $5 million more, bring that cost down. That adds to the point.
Historically, the trust hasn't done very much on multifamily. When I first got on in 94, 95, whenever it was, we were dealing with some very unsuccessful projects that we were getting out of that didn't work for anyone. What's different about this is the projects are in areas that no one wants to live in typically. They could be in a target area, they could not, there's not a restriction on that. But it provides, you know, the little ARPA deals we did, as I told you when we had coffee, that one of those pieces that we went, some of us went and looked at was a burned-out house for 20 years probably. And now it's new housing, affordable new housing, not just one piece, but two on that lot that are each two units or four units, depending upon which side it's on. And something like this, to me, if it creates affordable housing, whether it's single or multifamily, that's what we're here to do. And that's what sets us apart from the private apartment market. And there would obviously have to be restrictions if they can't build luxury apartments and get a tax credit. And we wouldn't want any part of that. I think we'd want to restrict it just to affordable housing.
Yeah, that's exactly, and I mean, another point is we don't want to be, you know, part of the financial development team. Right? We have a very limited purpose role, you know, almost like a site manager or like construction manager, you know, type thing. That's, that's kind of what we're talking about, not, you know, actively throwing cash, you know, our cash into a deal and hoping for success, you know, those kinds of. They're required to bring all the equity, you know, all their funding sources. And this is kind of that last, the last mile to get them over the barrier.
It's a great cherry because it's very difficult to do affordable housing, you know, when you're using brands and things like that. It's going to have to be approved. Yeah, it's a little situation. Yeah, it's the same 8% on the mortgage.
I think, you know, obviously, I'm advocate for homeownership, but it's not a typical rent. So our rental option or opportunity, I think, is good for our board.
I can make a motion. I have motion to have Jared fill out, apply to have a sales tax.
Motion. My second. Hi.
Motion passed.
Good vote. I mean, it'll be a little more work on our part, but I think it will be over the end.
Absolutely. Jared, you're on five as well.
So five is kind of the tandem tonight. That's me, you directing me to, let's go ahead and put that work together, put that, you know, kind of outline together. If you meet kind of the ad valorem exemption requirements, then you could also apply for us. And that would be our guidebook going forward that we could disseminate to, you know, all of the nonprofit affordable developers. That request, we'll post on the website, we'll send it to OHFA, you know, for when they're coming through for the tax credit deals, you know, all of that kind of stuff.
Don't need to do anything until we get that thing passed. What's the likelihood of that happening? Of us getting taxed event?
I would think it's probably pretty, I would say it's probably pretty, you know, pretty high. I don't know why they would deny this, you know, necessarily. So especially if, if we meet kind of the restrictions in the statute, you know, for affordable development and all that kind of stuff anyway, then, yeah, I don't think there's a basis for them to deny something. I mean, it's like, you know, Tulsa Housing Authority, Oklahoma City Housing Authority, completely separate, independent organizations. They've applied and received, you know, kind of the same exemption on the same basis. They've applied and received kind of the same exemption on the same basis as since they're a public trust. There's just a different form you have to fill out and actually make the effort to go through it because we're probably rightly so, tax commission doesn't just want to give up, you know, the sales tax.
Anything else on five? Any questions?
Would the criteria that you, you know, come up with, would you be presenting that to us or provide it to us?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we can, we can put that together. I don't think you have to take any action on five today. There's nothing that's imminent, you know, nobody's knocking on the door saying, hey, we need this tomorrow. So let me, let's get, let's get the application filled out, approved by OTC. And then I can bring you back kind of the outline of, you know, those that would qualify to our.
I can change it to take back if you want to read. Thank you, Jared. Moving to six, which is yours as well.
Yes, very quickly. So as everybody knows, we reallocated that last $250,000 to Urban League. They have closed on their first property for $129,000 and some change. They're in rehab right now. We expect some invoices relative to that rehab in the next couple of weeks before December. They've also indicated that they've got another two properties under contract. There are some conditions on those. But if all goes well, we would expect them to spend the balance of their work by the end of the year. Which is well in advance of the timeline that we kind of set up in the revised timeline and everything else. And then that'd be one more thing that we can be happy with and show success. And most importantly, that restores us back to the full number of units that we provided in our ARPA application, which is like 239 affordable units that have been assisted in creation through our ARPA project. That's it for me.
Thank you. Number seven. We are leaving or you guys are leaving?
We're out.
Yeah, so I need a motion in a second to recess.
I make a motion to recess.
Hi, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want me?
Sure.
I make a motion to return from executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I was gonna wait for Jerry to make sure we don't mess this up, but I make a motion to increase our executive director, David Sal- David Pizel's salary to $74,000 starting June 1st.
My second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I was gonna wait for Jerry to make sure we don't mess this up, but I make a motion to increase our executive director, David Sal- David Pizel's salary to $74,000 starting June 1st.
My second motion.
All in favor? Make a second motion.
Is it in conjunction to your?
It has to do with the same thing.
Okay, go right ahead.
To add a annual review for this meeting every November, starting November 20th.
Annual review of the executive director.
Annual review of the executive. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, thank you all for that, that still keep us below the salary Ed was at, which is good. Uh, no further, further items of business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
We are adjourned.